Yeah, we are.
Wow, it's a little long to get in here. Like I hear like echoes, I feel like I'm down at the Brown Stadium. I don't know where it's such a hurry. Please, please, please. The United States. When he had to start the. Roll call, please.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Here.
Mr. Condit?
Here.
Mr. Malina?
Here.
Mr. Silverston?
Here.
Mr. Walter?
Here.
Approval of meeting minutes for July 9th, 2013. Move to approve. Second roll call on approval of minutes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Going to committee reports, Mayor?
This point in time was really starting a lot of constructions work and I will let Gene touch on that. Reports. Journal interjecting, members of the staff of any. No report, outside.
Mr. Carpenter.
Just one item, Rita has sent us a form to authorize them if we want to to take over our tax abatement board's role basically and make determination as to the abatement of taxes or not. We don't have to give them that authority. Our choices are to negotiate the abatement of taxes and interest, negotiate the abatement of our penalty and interest, negotiate the abatement of penalty only, or refer everything to us. Presently it's referred to us, council have a wish on that. And if they do, we need to, I would recommend to authorize by motion later in the meeting tonight to authorize the mayor to execute this agreement or this authorization.
How many cases did we actually add in the last?
Six a year.
Yeah. It's definitely that many.
Tonight we had four and prior to that, I think we had two.
Yeah, we had four tonight, only two applicants showed, so we denied two of them. We granted one of them and we granted a penalty only. Okay, maybe we paid the interest.
What's Rita charging us?
It's not an additional charge.
If it's not an additional charge, then why wouldn't we? What's the?
You know, to keep control of your own abatement situation, are they going to be a little more lax or are they going to be tougher? No one knows the answer to that. So, you know, and I think Mario's.
Every time you give up control of something.
Right.
You're giving up control, how's that look, huh?
Yeah, you're giving up some control here to hear these abatement issues. There's not very many of them. Um, just probably been four or five months since we had one. Tonight we had four.
Usually it's one at a time.
Usually it is one at a time. I don't know what happened here.
So, I don't think it's a burden, do you think Mario, is it a burden?
It's not a burden now.
And we'll sign this in Senate and we're going to refer it to our municipal tax board. Okay, unless it.
Thanks. Gee?
Tonight we have resolution thirty-five, which is accepting the street dedication for road book. We had three, four, and seven. And went to HOA and they never informed us of six. Six is also private street, we went out and did a review on six. There's one slide with mine correct, but everything else is in compliance, we updated the report. But, uh, report is complete with modification of three, four, six, and seven cases. Res- that's thirty-five, resolution forty-two.
Right, Gee.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A plant? We're going to give us a plant.
Oh, okay. I'm trying to say that's, if you go ahead with the dedication, I already got prices for a plant, that will be the next step. You know, the way we set it up is we'll go into the repairs. That was thirty-five, we'd be accepting the streets. We would then go do all the repairs, which is, I have forty-two, which is, I've got a price from TriMar to twenty-six thousand dollars to go into all the repairs. And then I have a quote from Bonning to do each new map before class worth a thousand dollars apiece. That's four thousand dollars. And the HOA, uh, has dedicated thirty-five.
Correct, so that leaves us with five.
Well, yeah, right in that range, right. Now, as, you know, when you get into concrete repair, we went through and did analysis, we're twenty-six X dollars. You know, we might want to, we, once it's all done and said, if we end up finding another curb or two removed, but we should be in good shape, yeah, we should have over five thousand dollars. So the money will cover it, and that will be accepted in resolution forty-three. I'm not moving forward quickly in the class dedicated because they'll become four year toer dedication, I thought you wanted to get the roads all repaired. The money in first, thirty-five thousand, go do the concrete repairs, then we'll bring the plats before planning commission, get approval, come to council and then report.
Gee, the last meeting I asked you to give us a plant, you said okay. This resolution says, as shown on the will of dedication plan, it's not there.
Well, we, we, there's plats for all four that were done, that dedicated the right away. They're going to take those and put the appropriate signature of planning commission and everything. And we have a quote for them to finish the preparation, but I'm caught, caught in the middle, I can't spend four thousand dollars until I have money in.
Well, I can't pass an ordinance that says, as shown on the will of dedication plan, but I don't have the plan.
I, I understand, but if we, if I went and got the plats obtained and I had the money and thirty-five thousand. So if you want to hold off on, on the acceptance of that, I don't have, you know, that's up to you, it's your choice. I'm trying to, I'm trying to first not spend money they don't have until they give us the thirty-five thousand. Once they give us thirty-five, it's a thousand dollars a plant, they have prepared the plats. With that thirty, with that buyback, then pay them, have the money also then to go out and do all the concrete repairs. See, I'm not trying to rewrite anything, I'm just, you tell me which.
In a perfect world, you should have four thousand dollars left over, like a little over four thousand.
Yeah, I probably have about four thousand left over.
In case of things run into that are greater than what you.
Right. But right now, we, you know, I, you know, Mr. Walters, we'd like to accept the thirty-five thousand, once we get the money in.
You can take the thirty, you can put this on hold if you want, and then you can take the thirty-five thousand and let him go get the plats.
Probably, is there any legal ramifications either way in this?
Could be.
Okay.
I mean, I can't give you a reventuality of this, but, you know, you're talking about fairly significant legal issue, so probably do it by the numbers.
Well, I guess the question is, if we approve forty-two and forty-three, and just table thirty-five until next meeting, or whatever plats are actually done, is that what you're asking, Ed? That's what I'm telling you, can't, that you shouldn't be able to do, but.
Right.
There could be.
Yeah, I mean, basically, I think the way the resolution, Mr. Carpenter, try to remember back on the dedication, we'd say, they would give us money to pay for the flats and the correction of them. So we have to accept the money.
Correct, that has to be done.
Once I get the money, I get the flat prepared, I get the correction stuff. Then, if you want to hold off thirty-five, then bring it back and do the official dedication at night, that, that's fine, I'm trying to wade through the best, best situation here. But I do have a price, yeah, for both of those, that is less than what they're giving us, so that will protect us just in case this messes up, things come up. But then, uh.
Do they have the thirty-five thousand ready to give us?
Yes.
That's what they're saying. And now the, the next stage of that is, then we put a fee on their taxes for extra years.
So. You know, here's, with the acceptance of the money, you can do it by emergency.
Right.
You know, get it done right away, you know, these other things are at first reading, I think.
The only one that's accepting the street dedication is at third reading, thirty-five.
Third reading.
So we can postpone it to the next meeting or delay delivery.
Right.
They both have the same effect, except postponing it, you bring, goes only to a certain, so you could postpone it to the next meeting, delaying can go on indefinitely. So, that's the doing of, again, your pleasure, I'm not, I don't want to spend money that you didn't have, that's why I didn't go get the money done, but I did get the quotes and everything, so, you know.
Came from a council point of view, if we were to approve thirty-five, then we're accepting the streets for dedication. That's what agrees.
You know, I think there's some, I think there's levels that they have to.
Well, we already approved, we already approved the levels, we did that.
We, we approved the, um.
The procedure.
Right. But they have to meet each one of these steps.
Correct.
So, you know, at any time, they could back out.
Well, and that's their issue with paying the thirty-five thousand before we pass.
If you put in there upon, upon completion of corrective action and recording a flat, then that gives, that, you may, you're going, you're going to do it, but they'll have to pay us for recording the flat. You know, I guess this is a chicken or the egg.
Is it, they're not going to pay us thirty-five unless we pay them thirty-five?
And they've made that clear from the start, they'll pay for thirty-five once.
Right.
Once resolution thirty-five passes.
Well, just say upon them providing thirty-five thousand and after the flat recorded, then they're going to put it on those two items.
Have that.
But the one, the only process, when we did the procedure, pardon, when we did the procedure, one of the things that had to be done was had to be brought up to the standard first.
Correct.
That's what thirty-five thousand was, to bring it up to standard. So, that is within the steps of getting it dedicated.
I, I know that, and that's what I was just asking, Ed, because he, he was part of that group that formulated those procedures. If, if, it's, that's a, um, a first step to the whole thing, is to bring them up to some standard.
Right. And that's what they need the thirty-five thousand for, is what I guess to do it.
So I think, to me, the way I understood that agreement, in my recollection is, they pay the money, those steps are taken care of, and then you accept the flat. That was the way I, I thought.
It's not outside the steps.
Yeah. Over here. Wait, I see it. Recorder, record, something, something. You know, the steps are formal request by the homeowners association, and then, um, if that's approved, council will consider, um, street dedication study, which you've already done.
Which they gave us the five thousand dollars.
Okay. And then that shows what the, the cost is here, how much the deposits are. Uh, the village engineer shall perform analysis of the infrastructure to be considered for dedication. Or then, then the infrastructure improvement costs. And, and you are to examine, analyze data, obtain then the study of the existing infrastructure. The petition is signed by the homeowners, property owners, preparation of legal documents for dedication, that's steps. That's the sixth step, and we're at the third step, where they pay the money, is turn fourth step.
You know, there's a very detailed cost, but he, he showed the, he tried to make lumps on papers those prior to the street dedication. So they're at that stage where they've got to make the lumps on paper.
Correct.
So they have to make lumps on paper before.
Is that passing?
Correct.
Was those thirty-five?
No.
Forty-two, forty-three.
Right.
Here's.
Thirty-five? Thirty-five, no, that's, that's, that's the accepting of dedication, so I would not.
Nothing but skipping ahead to the Lincoln table.
Right.
Anything else, Gee?
Yeah, also, our resolution forty-seven will be accepting, grant, public services will give us six hundred and forty-four thousand and, uh.
Two hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and forty-four thousand towards the improvement of Renata's Trail. We have to accept that, and then item forty-eight would be awarding the contractor to TriMar. Uh, confusion on the dotted amount on forty-eight will be amended to be one million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, two seventy-one. That, that would then approve TriMar before with doing the water line repair and the roadway improvement. The water line is private, so already been submitted to Cleveland Water Department. Uh, I think you're going to receive about five hundred and fifty, five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars from Cleveland Water, which will cover the installation of the water line and inspection and reimbursement for the engineering that was done for the water line. That's the process. We're also, we'd be setting a request to the county to use permissive tax of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. So basically, the community down the, hard to any, any cost. The only thing that I did mention last time, this is a whitopping of the existing roadway. I'm having the contractor get the cost to stabilize, put back a settlement, concrete pad, so a brand-new roadway. This would make some, a bit of a great variation, and I don't think it would be that much more expensive to get. Bid, bid was one million, four twenty-three, the second bid, the third bid were about one million, six fifty. So you can't say, you know, you've got quite this bid on this, or you might want to consider that.
So, so resolution forty-eight, two thousand and thirteen, we have to change the amount.
One million, four twenty-three, two seventy-one.
One million, four twenty-three, two seventy-one?
Yeah, that was actually the, my mistake, we, we put as the.
Just the grant funding or whatever, yeah.
Windjammer Trail. Mayor, Marlon and me have discussed that, the, the cost to do the water line repair, we went to Cleveland Water to try to get as much funding as possible, and they are willing to raise their funding and they'll give us two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. The estimates to do the water line, as is because of the complexity of the other utilities that are in that roadway, that's maybe three hundred and ninety. That would leave the village responsible for the extra hundred thousand. We looked at to fully replace the roadway, there'd be a cost of five hundred and eighty-five thousand to totally do the roadway and the water line. In either case, if we were to get the owners to agree to pay portion of the roadway, the village would be responsible for some dollars. And I think Marilyn Lanza wants me to submit this, law of works next year, see if we can get funding to cover and do a full replacement of the roadway and the water line and get our costs down to nothing. Truly, it's very complex because of multiple utilities in there, and we have multiple bands, and we just, the money Cleveland Water gave us won't cover, so that's where we're at. Pirates Trail and Cove is done, we're working on putting punch list together, completing it, the, we are held eight percent on that until the punch list is done. And once this is completed, we're at a whole four percent until the grass grows and everybody's satisfied. So we're making sure we keep, got enough money to cover everything. Maryland Water Line Reconstruction is underway, they're on the north side, they're heading down the south side. Their completion should be maybe by the end of the week, or end of next week, and then do the full, full coronation and start putting in water taps for everybody. And then the road reconstruction will begin. Eric, and six is progressing, they put the water line in, uh, they're doing sanitary ladles, they'll do water taps, and complete the storm, and then roadway will happen probably by the end of this month, the beginning of next month. And that is where we're at.
Did you notice you put the stop sign up by?
I know that has to be.
By right.
We request that from the developer, get the stop sign up.
Must have advised them sometimes.
By you.
By me.
Maybe get it up, okay.
Thank you, Jim. Pepper.
Uh, yes, I just have one item to segue off of what Susan was talking about earlier. You should have received in your mailboxes a revised budget for Pedals Trail, that shows the difference in, it's about seventy thousand dollars difference because Cleveland Water is giving more money. So, that seventy thousand dollars, which is part of the original appropriations, is available to use elsewhere through the second to do any other projects.
This is.
Thank you, Governor. Police chief. For the fire chief. Architectural Board Review.
We have a special meeting, uh, this Thursday at seven o'clock, which is the fifteenth, and then our regularly scheduled meeting would be, uh, the twenty-sixth at seven o'clock.
If anything dissolved from our, our last meeting about the garage, that needed to be recited to match?
No, but I'll make a note and ask Bob on Thursday.
Thank you. Planning and zoning.
No.
Board of Zoning Appeals.
We've got a big.
Twenty-six.
Yeah. Any question too about, there's a garage, or no, a shed, uh, architectural review board did. Only because I was out walking. The architectural look at, they were supposed to move it away from the house, and I don't know that they ever did. Going California, I'm here. Sorry, floor.
It's still on the side of the house.
It's still on the side of the house?
Their house is flooded, and I think it's because the water ran off the roof, the shed through the window. And I can't figure out where the water came from.
But I, I mean, I, you know, I remember we told them they had to move it away, still not been moved away.
I think the specifics to that was that they had the foot, uh, concrete pad down before they moved it, and I don't think they've done that part either, I don't know if we gave them the timelines or what, but that was the next step.
Well, I don't want to. We'll ask them about that as well.
Thank you.
Finding.
Just getting a board.
Finding today before this meeting, we recommended payments in the amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and fourteen cents. Our next meeting will be, uh, tenth of September, is that, do you think? At six thirty.
Cable? Yes, Kathy Way, the office manager at Table Nine, is retiring, and she's going to be replaced. That's it. Communications.
The, uh, communications committee met on, uh, last Monday, uh, discussed a number of things, uh, one new addition is the iPad mini up there, so this may, the whole is being recorded as well as, uh, council meetings. Terry will have access, basically Terry will take that off the wall when he comes in the morning and will put it online for anyone to view the meetings, which I think is a good step. We also talked about, um, or we're still working on getting the website, um, at least the, the, uh, front page updated as well, so things like that, most, a number of things, but, so.
We should start to say hi to our children. Hi, dear. Thanks. Welcome. Community Development. For having our meeting next Tuesday, seven o'clock, you are all invited. Thank you. Recreation.
We did not meet in July, um, the community gardens are going pretty well, we added eight water barrels, not rain barrels, but water barrels to the community garden, and even I can grow a tomato. Despite my, uh, lack of a green thumb. Our next, uh, meeting will be on the twenty-first, Wednesday, the twenty-first at seven.
I would eat that same.
Yeah, you said. Is that real? I applied one year.
You buy it earlier?
Yeah. That was the highest sticker.
Records. Number four. Seniors.
Seniors had lunch today at Angelo's in Aurora, we had ten. The next breakfast is at the Original Pancake House in Beechwood on the twenty-eighth at ten. And in September, we will have our annual picnic, that'll be on the sixteenth in the park by the old village hall.
Thanks. And Jen?
Jen's next meeting is September third, Tuesday, September third, seven o'clock, here at the Villa Trump. That is.
We go to legislation, that's like Tom. I want to have, so he's, he has an animal.
I saw that. Come on up.
All right, cool.
Tom, right?
Todd.
Todd.
Actually, yes. I gotta do it.
Todd's with the Akron Zoo.
The Akron Zoo, I got some handouts for you guys, uh, my name is Todd Warner, um, I'm an education specialist at the Akron Zoo, has anybody been to the Akron Zoo before?
Yep.
When's the last, how'd you guys been? Two, two years, I haven't seen a lot of the change though, that we have. You're going in like a couple weeks. Thanks, yeah, I got some for you guys too, as well, yeah, so I want some. So, um, okay, to talk about the happenings of the Akron Zoo and what we're doing. Yes, we'll have one, we'll have some over here too. Um, if you haven't been there in a while, we just actually opened up our brand new vivid, uh, Grizzly Ridge, and we'll kind of talk about that on the, okay, on the back is a timeline of what we've done, but the reason I actually came here is, I used to live in the reminder bill thirty years ago, so way back then what it used to be, and it actually, the Akron Zoo's made an impact with the support of, um, Summit County and all that. I used to work at the material park, so a lot of us did, and if you guys ever went there, it was an awesome place. Unfortunately, with, uh, Anheuser-Busch selling and all that, a lot of us actually, we lost our jobs, we were often moved down to Florida and California, but with the support of the taxes and all that, the Akron Zoo grew big time. So a lot of us animal people that worked at SeaWorld and the Six Flags Park are still in Ohio today because of the expansion of that. So it's a really cool story that, uh, we have about fifteen to twenty people that worked in the animal community that actually worked at the Akron Zoo. So we're a small, little community that we had at SeaWorld Park, and that's from there, we're still like the Akron Zoo working there. So, um, the reason we're here is, um, this is November, we're actually having our levy coming up again, and we're actually asking for a renewal. So if you guys actually look at the back of what we've done since two thousand and the support, we've grown big time, okay? So we opened up the year around the two thousand, and then after that, we opened up a brand-new parking lot, and two thousand and two was Wild Prairie, and then come, um, two thousand and four when SeaWorld and Six Flags left, that was the biggest expansion that we've ever had. So that's when we opened up Legends of the Wild with the Jaguars and all that. Now, the Akron Zoo is a little bit different from most of the zoos, actually the Ohio Zoos and all the Ohio Zoos were all accredited, so there's actually two thousand zoos throughout the whole United States, and from that, there's only two hundred and twenty-five that are AZA certified. So with that in mind, if you had, if you've been there within the past two years, Legends of the Wild, we actually had our Jaguars born there, and we've actually had two sets of babies there, and those are an endangered species that pretty much other zoos, even Cleveland Zoo, actually do not, um, actually have breeding that is going on right there. So we got a lot of stuff going on, I did bring an animal, and the reason I did that is, um, the school support, um, we do a lot of school support, um, we, we've actually gone to about three hundred and thirty thousand people have come to the Akron Zoo. You guys want to see some of the animal, the animal first before we see some of the horse stuff? We'll get that out. And he's actually really cool, it's an animal that you've probably never seen before, but he is actually from Australia, so we're bringing. But he is actually from Australia, so we'll bring him out so you guys can check him out. And let's see, oh, there he is. Come on, Mr. Man, turn around. Thank you very much. I know. And this right here is Buzz the Tony Frogmouth. So if you look at him, he looks kind of like an owl, but he is not related to an owl at all. He's actually related to a wicker owl or a nightjar. And he's actually from Australia and he's actually called the Tony Frogmouth. And the reason, who's buzzing at you right now, right there? So he's from Australia and this is actually a common bird from Australia. So when you look outside, you'll see red robins and all that. If you lived in Australia, this is an animal that you would see, okay? So they come out at nighttime and the reason he's called that is because he's got that tony coloration and he's actually called a frogmouth because when he gets scared, he does three things. What he does is he'll poop up and his eyes will dial it to make himself look a lot larger and then he opens his mouth up about this big. When he does that, there's that buzzing sound and that's how he got the name Buzz. His mouth opens up, it's bright yellow like a frog's mouth and he'll start buzzing like a bee, which actually scares off the predators. Um, this is the first time he's actually been on a program for the year and the reason for that is he's been on a little honeymoon. We actually just got from Discovery Cove in Orlando, another accredited zoo. We brought a female up and he was supposed to breed with her because these guys are pretty endangered in the zoological setting, okay? So he actually goes out to a variety of schools. So a lot of times what we do is we do lots of partnerships with different schools and we work within the inner city of Akron. So we go there, come next month, we'll start going to the inner city of Akron every day, Monday through Friday. And then from there, we actually bring animals throughout the summer or during the winter time. So we actually have extracurricular activities with those types of guys. So this guy's probably met in his lifetime over a happy million, a happy million heads, just by doing that.
Who does a big like?
What? There you go. But he's really cool. One thing that he can do, there we go, he's not going to do it. He's going to check it out, but he won't move his head at all. So what happens is he'll actually bob up and down just like that and his head will not move just because he's actually pretending that he's on the little right there. So I'll walk him around so you guys can do a nice look at him. But in the education department, we have over seventy different education animals that we bring out, schools, all that kind of stuff. We'll actually take them out to festivals and all that. So he has, he can, he's, he can handle anything, so. There you go.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And if you guys look at him.
His eyes are even pretty big.
Oh, yeah. So he's actually checking out there. But if I actually touch him right there, see how he did that? The way he actually catches, see that, yeah? So what happens is when he actually wants to hunt, he'll just sit there and he'll start buzzing like that and then, I know, I'm not going to do it now, but actually a fly will go over there, he'll open his mouth and it'll snag it right out of midair. So that's actually how he eats. So he's a pretty cool animal from Australia that we use. But we have a variety of animals from the basic chinchillas, guinea pigs that we use for preschool programs. And then we have higher end animals like this to macaws to a little, um, eeyu, which is kind of like a, like a little monkey or something like that. So we do lots of different programs. Right now, we're actually going out to a lot of the library programs right now. Every year, the library in Summit County has some type of theme and this year's Woods Digging U or something like that. So what we do is we bring animals that all are here on digging. So every year, we work with the Summit County Library Program as well. You guys have any questions about him at all?
Want to take a BRI plan there?
Sure, we can do that. Actually, that's a form of enrichment, so when I do do that, he'll actually check himself out, just like that. Very cool. So.
They'll be on your website in a couple days.
Yeah.
Oop. Good. And then we'll put him right back in there. And he actually gets to home with me tonight with my current kids, so, which is pretty neat. So, and if you look at the timeline, um, with the levy, we're actually not doing a, a new levy, we're just doing a renewal. So for a hundred thousand dollar house, it's twenty-three dollars a year. That's all we're asking for, so it's less than two dollars a month. But at the same time, um, I was just talking to you about, um, we have community days. So in August, if you guys, if you take your families to the community days, it pretty much pays for that year of that. But if you haven't come in a while, we just opened up Grizzly Ridge, which is, we have grizzly bears. Well, we worked with Cleveland Zoo where they actually held our grizzly bears for a little while, just because we were doing construction. But we have two grizzly bears and then we also have a huge otter exhibit that actually has a clear acrylic slide that goes through the water, so adults can actually slide through the water with the otters. And then we have three, uh, three right now. We have a male and two females. But right now, we just have the females out until we get them a little bit more accustomed for the males to go out there because that's always going to be thinking about is those females at the same time. And then we have wolves, coyotes, and then we have a, a random porcupine that we just have out. So we have a lot of cool things and then hopefully in the near future, we'll be having a lot more expansion as well. So we're not landlocked, but what we pride ourselves on is Summit County voters wanted more animals. We tripled the size of our, um, our park. They wanted more educational value, which we did, and they wanted more animal attractions as well, so. You guys have any questions at all?
Still have the red panda.
We still do have the red panda, so I think we're going to be doing a little facelift with that in the near future as well, so. Any others? Nope. Well, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. And you have to come out to see Grizzly Ridge, it's really cool, so.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
How late is the zoo open on weekends?
The zoo is open right now from ten to five and then come fall time, we're open from eleven to four. So we're open three to six to five days a year, other than Christmas, Christmas Eve, Thanksgiving and New Year's Day. So that's the only days that weren't open, but that was one of the things that they wanted in, um, for Summit County voters was they'd open all year round, so we did that, so. And we have a lot of bigger facilities. People are, it used to be a lot smaller, so put it that way. So we have a lot of cool stuff. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Orders twenty-two, twenty thirteen, an ordinance to transfer fifty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and twelve cents from the general fund, one thousand, the USDA bond requirement fund, thirty-one oh three, and declaring emergency. Orders twenty-three, twenty thirteen, an ordinance to transfer two hundred and ten thousand dollars from the jet income tax fund, ninety-two oh one, through the road levy fund, twenty-nine oh two, and declaring an emergency. Resolution thirty-five, twenty thirteen, a resolution to accept the recommendation of the village of Remindville to accept for street dedication that eight point seven seven five three acre portion of phases three, four, six and seven as shown on the Willowbrook Road dedication plaque, third reading. Resolution thirty-seven, twenty thirteen, a resolution to accept the recommendations of the planning and zoning commission to approve the final plaque for phase six of the Harrington Place subdivision, second reading. Resolution thirty-nine, twenty thirteen, a resolution, a resolution appointing handsome give up to the architectural board review and declaring an emergency. Resolution forty-one, twenty thirteen, a resolution to purchase Lenovo ThinkPad Twist for a sum not to exceed ten thousand dollars, first reading. Resolution forty-two, twenty thirteen, a resolution to award a contract to Tri-More Corporation for the Willowbrook pre-dedication roadwork project in an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand two hundred and twelve dollars and forty cents, first reading. Resolution forty-three, twenty thirteen, a resolution to accept the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars from the Willowbrook Homeowners Association to be used for the costs associated with the proposed dedication of streets in the Willowbrook subdivision, first reading. Resolution forty-four, twenty thirteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to file on behalf of the village of Remindville, an application to the Summit Akron Solid Waste Management Authority for the community recycling access grant and declaring an emergency. Resolution forty-five, twenty thirteen, a resolution to accept the recommendations of the planning and zoning commission to approve the replat lot split and consolidation of sublots one twelve and one thirteen in Harrington Place, phases four and five, first reading.
Could we, well, what's that about?
It was a small sliver of green space on the interior and they wanted to add it to the lots. It made more sense to be maintained and everything. And, uh, I don't know why they split it that way. It makes more sense today, include with the lot. That's what was recommended to planning and they.
Took it out of common area and put it in.
Yeah, but we're talking a tiny little sliver.
Right, okay.
And it's a big age away, we're never really maintaining, so.
Oh, I can guarantee you that.
So that's why we felt that providing, making a lot of it, then it helped me.
Resolution forty-six, twenty thirteen, a resolution approving an amendment to the Summit County nine-one-one plan to include the Southwest Summit Council of Governments as a public, public safety answering point and declaring an emergency. Resolution forty-seven, twenty thirteen, a resolution to accept financial assistance from the Ohio Public Works Commission for the novel's trail east reconstruction project in the amount of six hundred and forty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, first reading. Resolution forty-eight, twenty thirteen, a resolution to award a contract to Tri-More Corporation for the novel's trail east reconstruction project in an amount not to exceed six hundred and forty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, first reading, but they are mending that to one million four hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars. Whole business?
Yes.
Requesting resolution forty-seven and forty-eight.
To go by emergency?
Go by emergency so that we can get the work started. On resolution thirty-seven, I think, uh, you should go to third reading, be tabled. No more. My recommendation, four and five, the issue with the variance has not been resolved. Somehow you're going to have to.
We can table it right now. We won't do third reading. We'll just go to the second, we'll just table it.
I, I just, you gotta get four and five, yes. Hasn't come back, you know, it's very active.
Has he come back with any other resolution?
No.
None?
I think we've got to try to get him to finalize four and five.
So we have an approved apply, plaque for six. How, how is he building?
No, you, you go through the process. You, you approve the delivery plan and the subdivision plan and he's going through the process. So he's going to build the whole thing. Now he wants to transfer a lot and start building? The plaque has to be filed.
Okay, so the infrastructure part you do.
Right. But he can't start a house until the plats recorded. So this is kind of held, resolve four and five, hold them for a second. And the only thing that just stepping, you know, you're stepping out there, causing problems. On, on resolution thirty-five, first, do you have amended to include phase six? Because on the first, second reading is three point seven. So is that amended, Mr. Carter, or not?
This is amended.
Okay, amended. Just make sure you had it amended.
It's got three, four, six, seven.
Yes. And, and, and I guess this is the chicken or the egg. The name confirms is I'm recommending dedication upon completion of the private street ordinance. And that means if you deposit money, we can do the repairs and so on. They won't give you the money because you're not indicating what you're demanding, which they don't give you the money. It's just going back and forth. If you amended the language to say, uh, residents accepted recognition, accept the street dedication upon completion of the private street dedication ordinance, which would amend the half deals of thirty-five, we have to do repairs and get the plats. I'm just, you know what I'm saying? If you have to stay away here, it's up to you, but.
Well, then we'd have to amend the language then of that resolution?
Yes, sir. Maybe just put it on hold and then.
Table it, that's what we do the others.
That's right. Here's my dilemma, as a.
I'm sorry.
I have a dilemma with this because, you know, I don't know whether we're going to dedicate those streets or not. And I don't want them expending monies thinking they're going to be dedicated, but we don't. Because what we're doing is, we're saying that we won't dedicate them until you approve them. But we may not dedicate them now.
Well, that makes it more difficult to check on that.
I mean, if we have, if we take, if we approve them, I would think we're maybe going to take the process.
And we asked them, we, we formed a committee that put together the guidelines for street dedication. If that, that all was guidelines, then.
Then we, we were agreeing that we would approve them if they did all those steps.
I don't think we were. I, I think that, uh, if they considered for dedication, they had to be approved. But I don't think that we were saying if you approve them, we're going to dedicate them.
I guess I think that's the impression that everybody else on council was under. And if I, if I speak out of turn.
Well, I had asked about it at that time. I was told that we could shut it down at any time in the process. And now we're putting ourselves in a position where, since they spent the money and we have an obligation, that's not shutting it down. That's not, you know, permitting us to make the decision.
I think that the statement of shutting it down is if they don't comply with the steps or requirements that are given. And you would certainly be within clear rights of of not accepting it. I don't know if shutting it down is the right term, of not accepting it if they don't, you know, not going to get to step six if they haven't complied with one through five. But, you know, this council has done a resolution accepting the concept. The dedication of those trees, you know, we, we formulated this process. And, you know, they're following those all along the way up to council to say, hey, we're not going to accept it, but you're hard pressed to shut them down using your term if they have completed one through five and now they're at step six. You already improved them to our standards and complied with one through six. Things, um, if you want to shut them down, you need to have a reason and there would be no reason if they complied with those. Other than you just don't want to dedicate it.
In my understanding, because I was against the dedication two years ago or whatever this all started. But then we all came up with those steps. It was approved. In my understanding, as long as they followed all these steps that we outlined to them, that we would approve it if they followed those steps. That's my understanding. And I'm willing to follow through that. Since they're following those steps, I'm going to still approve.
I mean, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, it's still subject to vote of council at the end regardless, right?
Yep.
Now, obviously, each council person will vote themselves on. That being said, unlike you, I was in favor of street dedication and I wanted them to improve their streets up to our standards and then and I, my opinion hasn't changed, but, um, if, and you know, Lisa, my, my thought process is this, whether it's now, whether it's ten or fifteen years from now, they're located within the village. I'm realistic. I figured that sooner or later, whether it's our council or some other council, we'll end up having those streets dedicated and our village will be responsible for them. It, it's happened with, um, chores, but I would imagine that would happen with every development that's happened within our village eventually. As long as they bring them up to code, and I'm glad that we came up with this process. I think this is a good process. It requires them to, to go through steps and it requires them to bring them up to code. So, you know, I, I understand where you're coming from, Ed, and I, I actually think that you have every right. If you don't want to dedicate, you don't have to. You don't have to vote for it. But I, I, I don't think we, we're boxing ourselves in. It's still subject to vote of council at the end. But, you know, in, I think there's been some discussion and some of us feel obligated at this point, which is fine, however you feel. But I, I, I'm just saying, I, I think Ed absolutely has the right. If he doesn't want to vote for it, at the end, he doesn't have to vote. Even if they've gone through the steps, if it's something he disagrees with, he's vocalized that, think along the way, and I respect your opinion. I, I don't think you're roping yourself in, is what I'm saying.
I, I realize and I, I don't think I'm roping myself in either. But I don't want to force them to expend money if the streets will not be dedicated to do this. I, I have great difficulty with that and I think as, as a, as a essentially a private community within the village, as undedicated streets would indicate, that they certainly ought to want to keep them up to and repair. But I don't want to force them to repair it to come to the end and have. But I don't want to force them to repair it to come to the end and have us doing it.
I don't think anybody's forcing, I, I understand where you're coming from, you don't want to force anybody doing, I, I think they're doing this voluntarily. I think it's something they want to do, and, and they realize the risk. Um, but I think they also, they have a decent amount of support as well, so. There's, there's a risk with every venture, as you well know, in business.
Yes, I do. Thank you, thank you.
Hold business.
I just wanted to make a recommendation too on resolution forty-one, I think we should pass that by emergency as well, and hopefully we can have them by our September meeting, and we start the budget process, and, uh. It's on there, sorry.
No, no, no.
No. No, it's on there. We start saving on paper right away. What's this, or like, what's that page?
Yeah. Any other old business? New business? We received, I don't know, it's probably a month ago now, quotes for a new truck for the service department. Uh, we haven't yet to discuss these, so I'm bringing it up for discussion and. What people, has anybody even looked at them or? Very good, excellent. You're coming over to the dark side, I love it. So, uh, I feel he needs a new truck, and I would like to just pay for cash and not finance, we're financing too much. I got, I got a supporter, I'm very, so happy. Well, that's.
What's the, what's the time?
About one twenty-five, three hundred, I think, was total.
Yeah.
You discussing?
No, they haven't discussed that.
No.
Is that, does that prove the?
That was the two together. Yeah, that was everything, I believe.
There was the truck, and then on everything for the. Wow.
Right.
You might be assuming question, we have a place to store it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the tractor.
So, I'm bringing it up for discussion. I, I discussed, I haven't heard of anybody else.
I agree with Tom, I think we need to do this, we're, our roads that we're responsible for keep growing with the new developments. We keep spending more and mon, more and more money on that old truck. It will not make it through this winter. I don't know that for a fact, but based on what we spent last year and all the years prior.
It's barely made of itself.
Correct.
Uh, how fast is this, is it gonna be a truck?
Still another year, uh, almost, it won't be here for this winter.
It'll be next year.
Well, probably be summer of twenty fourteen. I, I live all for it, and I guess my, my big question would be is where is, where's the money coming from?
Yeah.
I'm in the favor of looking into it, especially if we can afford it.
Well, especially since now we've, I mean, I, I want to do it as soon as possible, but maybe we can find out and make a decision next council meeting.
When the resolution gets written, have us know where your money would come from, how we would do it.
Okay.
Hit it off. Very good. Thanks, all of mine. New business.
Any other new business?
Motion due, adjourned?
Hey.
Sorry. Go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, you got it up for a second.
Uh, and the, uh, we still don't have the blind person crossing since.
They're up there.
He's there.
Yeah.
Where?
Are you blind? Somebody had, somebody had my head.
Let me, let me, let me explain. There, uh, I, I would, I would say to you, they, they probably are not what I expected them to be. They're just square signs that say blind pedestrian or blind.
Blind crossing.
Blind cross or something like, they, it, um.
They're not the way.
They're not the way. And John did not put the ones up what he determined was Twinsburgs, he felt Twinsburgs should put them up, and I, I'm gonna, I have to talk with him, but put them up everywhere. So, there are, there's one, if you go out of the village, it was on the right-hand side.
I saw one going towards, from Twinsburg, like from Hyman's.
Oh, so maybe, maybe finally he did them up.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they also put the one up on.
Okay, because I asked them, I told them to do them all, and they don't, they got them.
Like the pretty, small ones.
It's not something you'll. Maybe if you're going fifteen, like you're supposed to be, might say so. But I was looking for the diamond shaped.
People are looking for them, can't find them. They're probably inadequate.
You can, well, that's, that's what's down, I can't say that, I'm very thrilled, they've been up for two days, three months.
Yeah, Thursday or Friday, they're in there.
Yes.
Okay. Any others?
The next meeting, next meeting, one minute.
Thank you.
All right. Motion due adjourned?
Second.
Roll call on adjournment.
Mr. Malia.
Yes.
Mr. Bob.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Condon.
Yeah. Okay, five-minute break, and we'll start.
Five minutes, and then the next.
Here we do pause it, just to stop the recording.